Good evening. Welcome to the Special Joint Meeting of the Ojai City Council, Planning Commission, and Building Appeals Board, meeting of September 30th. Role call.
Councilmember Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Lara is not here at the moment. Councilmember, I mean Mayor Protest Smith will not be here this evening. Mayor Strobel?
Present.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Jagliel, I'm sorry. Commissioner Nicklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Zabilla?
Here.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Here.
Chair Merk?
Here.
Board Member Farmer?
Here.
Board Member Daddy?
Here.
Board Member Hanson?
Here.
Board Member Hilgers?
Here.
And Chair Wierich?
Here.
Okay, and we'll ask Board Member Daddy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's over in this corner, Judy. Okay, please leave me in the salute to our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and this is a workshop regarding affordable housing, and I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to our city manager, Rob Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board and commission. Hopefully, we can get that adjusted. I want to thank everybody for attending, but I also want to thank the Ojai Affordable Housing Committee, which was the group that brought this to the city council and asked that we have some discussions about affordable housing in the community. Before they come up and introduce their team, I just wanted to say that this is a two-step process. This evening's workshop is really educational and informational, and the purpose is to present the facts and the background of affordable housing and the possibilities. At a subsequent, excuse me, at a subsequent city council meeting, we'll have a discussion item about the next steps, and we don't know what those next steps are yet, but we'll put together some options for the council to consider in order to move the process forward from this level. So tonight's not a decision-making meeting, it's an informational meeting. And with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Bill Miley and Judy Murphy, who will introduce it.
Good evening, council, commission, and board. I want to just mention that I'm aware, and you're aware of, I'm Bill Miley, by the way, 919 North Signal Street, and I'm the co-chair, along with Judy Murphy, of our Ojai Affordable Housing Committee. And I need to read this. It says here, "Tell the folks a little more about yourself so that they will know you're credible." So I guess I should do that. I've lived here for, with my family, for 44 years, and various boards and councils and council of the city continues to listen to what I have to say and think about it. So I guess I'm pretty credible, I don't know. A couple of years ago, a bunch of us who have been working with the city planning commission and the city council in the various housing elements, which are part of the general plan, as you know, decided that we needed to focus on the development of affordable housing for our city. So we formed the committee, and it ended up being called the Ojai Affordable Housing Committee. Kind of unique, I think, in a way. You're supposed to smile at that, okay. So, we've been meeting and talking and looking, and one of the organizations that we heard about and began to know about was People Self-Help Housing of Santa Barbara. And I remember, for years, Councilwoman Smith used to talk about Peoples, the Peoples Corporation, and everything about it. Finally, one day, we found out about it, and so Judy and I, as co-chair, went to Santa Barbara, and we talked to Ken Trigero, who is the Vice President of Real Estate for this organization. We saw some of their developments, we saw how they operate, we, over the next year or so, learned more, shared that information with some of you, and we are very impressed. As you know, the need for housing units has become very clear, as we see many Ojai folks who are paying 35% to 50% of their monthly family income for housing. And maybe this is a little joke, I think one of the reasons why we don't have a lot of people in the audience is they're out looking for affordable housing. Come on. We know that many folks who work here live elsewhere and travel because of the limited supply of rental units that they can't afford. So as part of our process, Judy Murphy and I spoke with Doug Tapken of the Ventura County Housing Authority. We had about a year ago, a two-hour conversation, which was extremely helpful, and we used that information, along with information we got from People Self-Help, as well as from our community development directors, and notably Catherine Wall. And that's why we're here. I will say something about Morgan Benavito, who is the project manager, and he is the leader of public, of People Self-Help tonight, and Judy will also introduce him when she talks a little bit more. And it says here, "Shut up and introduce Judy." Tom Murphy told me to say that.
I think Bill likes a mic. You're probably wondering what in the world I am doing here, and I'm going to tell you that in about one minute. Since 1969, California law has required each city and county to adopt a general plan that contains a housing element. The housing element basically provides the zoning, which would encourage increasing the overall housing supply, a small portion of which is supposed to be designated as affordable. Over the last couple of years, the city of Ojai Council has enacted Cycles Four and Cycle Five of our housing plans. The city has designated several parcels of land, both privately and city-owned, on which the developers could build with higher densities than our normal zoning would allow. While state law is encouraging all this development, our committee has taken a different track. We think that market-priced housing can and should develop on its own power. We agree that affordable housing, which is sorely needed in Ojai, will require some support. As such, our committee has been investigating the possibilities of working, of building workforce rental units, all of which we want to see be considered affordable. We requested the city to hold this educational workshop so that we can learn how this might be accomplished, and we are very appreciative of the council's quick and unanimous support. We're also appreciative of Carol for pointing us in the direction of People Self-Help, and for John Merk agreeing to having an educational workshop. So Bill Miley, as he said, and I have been visiting their sites. What we really liked about them is they don't just build and walk away. They build with onsite management, with after-school programs for the children, with a central multipurpose room or building, with supportive help by way of social service assistance, if that, if the need for that arises. The buildings that we saw were very attractive, very well-kept, very clean. We even talked to some of the tenants, who were very happy to be where they were. So it is my pleasure and honor to introduce Morgan Benavito. He's a project manager with People Self-Help Housing, and he's going to preside over this meeting, and he has brought a whole team of people with him, experts in their fields, and I think they'll be able to answer all of your questions. Thank you for giving us this opportunity and for your time, and thank you, those in the audience who came to listen to this. We appreciate your support.
I'm Morgan Benavito with People Self-Help Housing. I first want to thank the city council and the planning commission, the building appeals board for choosing us. We're honored to be here to present on this subject. We've been doing this for quite a few years now, over 40 years, and we feel like we're very passionate. It's our mission, affordable housing, and we're really glad to be able to share this with you this evening. Thanks to Bill and Judy for also making contact with us and introducing us to Ojai and yourselves, so we can go ahead and present this information to you, and hopefully, we can all learn from this together tonight. So affordable housing, some of you might be wondering what the word means, because I guess it could mean a lot to some people. We'll talk about that in terms of incomes and rents. Some people sometimes think of it as workforce housing, those that are working in your community, that are making not quite a living wage, and therefore, what income qualify for types of properties that we manage. So I'll go ahead and start going through this presentation. I want to be brief, because I know that you're going to have questions, and that's really where I think the value is going to be. And I assume that you can see the slides on this screen here, right? Okay. So this evening, myself, Morgan Benavito, Ken Trigero, who's our Executive Vice President, was ill this morning, was unable to make it, and the same is true with Rick Galeno, who's our resident services manager, he is also ill. But we also have with us Rochelle Rose, who's our fund development director. She spent some time managing our after-school program, so she's going to be able to speak to our services tonight. We have Joe Thompson with the Duncan Group. The Duncan Group is a nonprofit affiliate of People Self-Help Housing, and they manage all of our properties. So he's going to speak to the management side of how do we manage our properties. And then we have Dow Dong from Main Street Architects in Ventura. We've worked with Main Street Architects, we wanted you to, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about design, because we know that's on some people's minds here in the community. How do you design affordable housing? How do you make it fit into a community? And then we have Linda Bronn Schweiger. Here with us is this evening, she's Director of the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund and is also a consultant of ours here in Ventura County for People Self-Help Housing. So about Peoples, just briefly, this is not necessarily a presentation about Peoples, it's about affordable housing in general, but just to give you a little background, our mission is to provide affordable housing in programs leading to self-sufficiency for low-income families, seniors, and other special needs groups on California's central coast. The map gives you a sense of where we operate. We were founded in San Luis Obispo over 40 years ago, so that's why you see, I think, a concentration of properties and projects that we've worked on in San Luis Obispo County. Our articles of incorporation are, allow for us to go from Monterey County to Ventura County, as well as San Luis and Santa Barbara County, and we've done three projects here in Ventura County. One of them is in Ventura, it's called the El Patio Hotel. It's a special needs project. And then the two that you see in Piru and Moore Park are single-family homes. We have a self-help homeownership side of our company that takes in groups of families, and they help literally build their own homes. And a lot of people say, "Oh, you mean like Habitat?" Yes, it's a similar model. People help build their own homes. It takes, I think, approximately a year for that to happen, and that's what took place in Piru and Moore Park. Those properties are, those projects ended, I think Piru was a good 20, 25 years ago, and Moore Park was maybe around the year 2000, it wrapped up. The El Patio Hotel's a little bit newer in Ventura over the past several years, I think that one was completed. So as I mentioned, we have over 40 years' experience on the central coast, providing affordable housing, both on the apartment rental side and the single-family homeownership side. We've won numerous awards nationally for our work in the affordable housing field. We're a community development, housing, certified community housing development organization, or a CHODO, which is a HUD designation. When HUD releases some of its funds, some of those funds are actually earmarked for organizations such as ours to receive for affordable housing. We provide education, as well as health and social services, in collaboration with local organizations. So we have licensed social workers on staff that work with our residents, and if they need assistance in some way, we'll make sure to line them up with that assistance. And then property management, as I mentioned before, is by our nonprofit affiliate, the Duncan Group, which was founded, what year was that founded, Joe? Do you remember?
No.
Late 90s, right, Rochelle?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-five, around 1995, I think. So that's a brief intro to Peoples and who we are. So why are we here, I think, is the question. So what is the need in the community for Ojai? And so we are a charter member of Neighbor Works America, which is a national organization, essentially a network of affordable housing providers, and Neighbor Works America, hit that button, no, here we go. Neighbor Works America has a group or a division within their company that does data and mapping and policy research, and they've extended this to their member organizations, said, "Hey, if you need any data or information about affordable housing, give us a call." So I did. I said, "Tell me about Ojai. What's going on there? We have perceptions, we think we know what's going on, but what does the data say?" Because that's really what I think this boils down to. So what you see here is a change in the population of Ojai from the year 2000 up through the year 2012, and this is from the US Census. And you'll see that your ages, everybody under the age of 55, you've decreased in your population, and your age group, 55 to 64, has increased by over 100%. And then your 65 and over population has remained fairly steady. And you can see this graphically, some people visualize things graphically, so we graphed it, and the yellow bar is your 55 to 64-year-old population, and you can see the downtrend in the others, especially in the younger age groups. So what does it mean in terms of income? What's going on in the income in Ojai? Well, your median household income has risen, that's a good thing, by a considerable amount, 41%. However, your rent has outpaced income, 51%, so a gain of 10%, and your median home value has risen 130% over this time period. And this is a graphical representation of that. Median home value being the gray bar in the far right, and the household income being the blue bar on the, to your left. So there's a website called PolicyMap that does data, and so this information that I'm about to share with you comes from PolicyMap, policymap.com. So low-income households spend 52% of their gross income on housing in Ojai. 58% of all renters are burdened by housing costs. 73% of all renters earning less than $50,000 per year are burdened by housing costs, and 43% of homeowners are burdened by housing costs, and if you're making $50,000 or less, it's 60% of homeowners are burdened by housing costs. How does this relate in Ventura County? The availability of affordable housing in Ventura County has decreased 25% in the last 12 years. So in 2000, there were 27 affordable rental units per 100 extremely low-income households. In 2012, that number was 20 per 100 extremely low-income households. So what is affordable housing? Okay. What is affordable housing? A lot of people, one of the first questions I get is, "Well, how much do these people make that live in these apartments?" So this is a table taken from the Tax Credit Allocation Committee. Tax Credit Allocation Committee is under the State Treasurer's Office, and this is a primary financing vehicle for affordable housing. They have a competitive process, a 9% tax credit program and a 4% tax credit program that's non-competitive. We'll go into some of that later on. The reason I chose this vehicle is because it seems to be the most logical fit for Ojai, given the funding sources available. And what this means is, in Ventura County, this organization publishes, this state agency, publishes income levels, so who's allowed, who's capped, and allowed to live in these developments. And what you see is the 100% income level is your median income, based on a one, two, three, or four-person household, up to eight people in a household. And affordable housing, for tax credit purposes, if you were to accept this financing, is capped at 60% and under. So take, for example, a four-person household, 60% income, you're looking at $53,220 in income as a household, would be the limit, the upper limit. The verbiage you see on the left side, this is HUD equivalent. HUD publishes numbers that they call low-income, extremely low-income. This is the HUD, how HUD would match up with this table, if you were to look at the HUD table. Different verbiage, but the numbers are almost identical, the TCAC numbers are slightly under HUD. So how's that translate into rent? If you were to then take that 60% family and then translate it into a two-bedroom rent at 60% income level, you'd be looking at $1,198 in rent, cap versus the 100%, which is almost $2,000. Now, it's important to keep in mind that we don't, when we set up a tax credit financing project, we don't just offer 60% income-level units. We distribute it across all these income levels, so that you will be hitting people at different income levels, 60, 50, 45, and 30. And you'll make sure units, there's a formula that TCAC uses, to make sure that you're getting an appropriate percentage of units all the way across these income levels, to provide opportunities for everybody that's from extremely low up to this low-income level. So additional features of affordable housing, it would be deed-restricted, so if you were to accept this financing, you would record a deed on the property, the restriction for up to 55 years, minimum 55 years, for affordable housing purposes. That would mean that the community would have assurance that, once this asset was brought to bear and rented up, that it would remain that affordable asset for that many years. Peoples manages only affordable housing, so for us, it would go much more beyond 55 years. Public funders impose regulatory restrictions, so whenever you accept a public source, and you guys know this, Mr. Clark knows this as a city manager, they all come with strings attached, and we're no different, and so we abide by those regulatory requirements. And then the property is privately owned and managed, we mentioned our property management. What will happen with these tax credits, as a nonprofit, they don't benefit us in any way. What we do is we sell them to an investor, and we'll get into a little bit of the details of that in the next few slides. And then while the property may house tenants eligible for Section 8, it's not necessarily that all tenants are Section 8 eligible, or all tenants have Section 8 assistance. They're eligible, sometimes we have them, sometimes we don't. It's, we'd have to work with the housing authority on how they want to do that, if they want to do that. That's kind of a different discussion, really. So the financing of it, one of the things that I hope the council and the planning commission and the building appeals board can wrap their mind around is, you know, how do you, how do you rent housing for less than market value? And it really comes down to financing. You need a piece of public funding to make this work out, and that public funding becomes very important to your competitiveness, to getting the tax credits, that private equity, you need to finish the project. So typically, what you see is about a 20% to 40% public funding ratio, the remainder being private equity. I've seen more 20% to 30%, but the example I'm going to show you tonight was closer to 40, so I wanted to make sure that range was represented. So some examples of public funding sources, local in lieu funds, and local land donation, development impact fee waiver, deferral. The state of California has a multifamily housing program. Prop 41, which was on the ballot just a couple of years ago for veterans' housing, is a funding source. The Home Program through HUD and Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG through HUD, is eligible for affordable housing. The Housing Trust Fund, some local, some housing trust funds have long-term loans available. The Affordable Housing Program through the Federal Home Loan Bank. US Department of Agriculture for farmworker housing has a program, have a couple of programs. And Neighbor Works America were an affiliate, and Neighbor Works America will provide grants to their charter members for capital needs, and so we can also contribute those funds, and they're considered a public source, because Neighbor Works receives a direct allocation from Congress. The private sources, that tax credit program I talked about becomes private by way of that exchange with the investor, regular bank loans. Citibank and Bank of America have just recently settled with the Department of Justice, and they are now making available low-interest loans for affordable housing as a part of that settlement. Neighbor Works Capital Organization and capital campaigns and donations. As a 501(c)(3), donations are tax-deductible, and some people do contribute to our projects. So Low-Income Housing Tax Credits 101, just briefly, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but it came about by the Community Reinvestment Act in the mid-'80s. What was happening is banks were taking deposits in low-income neighborhoods but not lending back to those neighborhoods, and Congress recognized this as a problem, and said, "No, you gotta give loans to low-income people and communities, and one way they can satisfy this requirement is investing in projects like ours." And that's where that tax credit swap happens. It's a market rate, they'll pay sometimes more than a dollar per credit, sometimes less, depending on their CRA needs or other market conditions. They become an investor. We partner with them for a minimum of 15 years, they'll stay in the project. We will be the managing partner, and they'll be a majority owner of the property, but they won't manage the property anyway. Then after 15 years, what will typically happen is we will buy them out, and they'll go on their separate way. At that time, we can get new tax credits and get a new investor to rehab the property. There's a number of things we can do, use reserve funds to rehab the property, there's different ways to go about it. And then the regulatory agreement that comes from that tax credit committee from the state of California is imposed on the property. So there's two different programs, as I mentioned, this 9% program, which is a larger chunk of tax credits, usually for new construction, and the 4% program, which is usually a smaller amount of tax credits, which is typically a rehab program. The 9% is highly competitive, you only get to apply twice a year, March and July. So in order to divide up these valuable tax credits across groups and communities, they set, they do set-asides. They set aside tax credits for nonprofits, like ourselves, for rural housing, and at-risk housing, which is affordable housing that is at risk of going to market rate, if you're able to preserve that, they have a set-aside for that. Special needs housing, and then they divide everything by geographic regions. So Ojai is considered rural by USDA. I had a phone conversation with the USDA representative, and the reason that's important to Ojai is it means that you're in a less competitive category, makes it a little bit easier to get funding for projects in Ojai. But I do need to get USDA to put that in writing to me. That was a phone conversation. So I do want to show an example of funding, just real briefly. If I can get IT to pull up that spreadsheet, I just want to show you just a snapshot of a breakdown, and it's a bit small, maybe we can blow it up to about 75%. You can see, this is an example of a property we did, a project we did in carpentry, called Dahlia Court II. It was just completed a little over a year ago, and on the far-left side, you'll see a blue column called Uses, and you can see the land cost there, construction cost, and, oh, I have a pointer here, right there. Construction, including soft costs, and the remaining other costs, such as appraisals and attorney's fees and consultant fees. And so how do you pay for all this? That's the question, right? And this is the breakdown on the right, called Sources. You can see we received county CDBG and home funds, in the amount of 1.7 million, just over. The city carpenter donated land to this project, and that was valued at $540,000. City carpenter also provided a fee waiver from their development impact fees, and that's shown here, about $400,000. The federal home loan bank provided a low-income housing loan, $330,000. We received a grant from a foundation, a local foundation. Peoples had some land adjoining this property, so we donated it to the property. So that partnership that gets formed with that investor, Peoples gives up the land to that partnership, becomes a land donation. And then we received two loans, conventional bank loans. This tranche B loan was taken out on some Section 8 units that we did receive, you can take out a loan based on that alone. It doesn't pay for the whole project, so where do you get the remaining money? And that's where the tax credits come in. You can see it's clearly a majority of your financing comes from this private source. Okay? Thank you, IT. If we can go back to the presentation. So how do we manage our projects? So how do we manage our projects, well, how do you have confidence as a city that we don't just sit and say, "I'm a spitball on the phone", trying to figure out what's going on in Ojai? Well, we have in-house professional project managers like myself, I'm a certified project manager, been doing this for a few years. I've worked in public land use for public agencies, so I understand the land use process. We have licensed contractors on staff who manage our construction projects, so we're our own contractor, a general contractor. We'll have an onsite superintendent during the construction process. And then we also partner locally, and one of the examples we want to bring up to you is Main Street Architects from Ventura. We've worked with them on a project in Avala Beach, and we want Dowdown to just give you some examples and talk to you a little bit about how we want to work with the community to make sure that design is correct and appropriate for a community, and how he goes about that in his process, and how we did it in Avala. Dow?
Thank you, Morgan. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the planning commissioner. I'm glad to be here tonight to talk with you a little bit about the, how we approach the design to help address the affordable housing issues. Again, my name is Dowdown, I'm a principal at Main Street Architects, we're based out of Ventura and LA. We have done affordable housing for the last, maybe fifteen, twenty years. They come in different types, different nature, from senior affordable housing to low-income affordable housing to middle-income affordable housing. So they come in different stages. But before I talk about the particular project, I have to show you this, and this is a design solution. And I just want to show you that, when designed properly, it can help address a number of issues. This one doesn't leak, and I can use it probably for the rest of my life. And so it helps with the environment. And it's the same thing with designing buildings or designing affordable housing. When we talk about affordable housing, a lot of times, it conjures kind of different images in people. And a lot of that is, can be negative because of what they have seen elsewhere, or what they have read about, or what they have experienced themselves. But what I can tell you, though, is, in the case of People Self-Help and some other affordable housing clients that we have dealt with, it is just the opposite. The ones, the affordable housing that we have seen, that we have observed, is many times, they are even better than the market-rate housing. They're better designed, they're better maintained, and I know for a fact that, in the case of People Self-Help, they're very tightly controlled in terms of how the tenants behave, or how they live in their facilities. So it's like they have really strict rules in terms of, you know, how they maintain the place. In the case of Lakonterra in Avala Beach, this is a very difficult site in the sense that it was at one point owned by Seventy-Sixth, the oil company. And I believe back in the seventies or so, because of some oil spill, the site was pretty badly contaminated. Not just the site, but major parts of a town, so the oil company went through a process of cleaning up the town, and as part of, I guess, a settlement in front of the court, they donated the site to the county. And the only thing that they can use it for is affordable housing. When we were approached to design this facility, we realized that the site is quite challenging, because it has a lot of topography, a lot of terrain. And at first, we didn't know how we can provide them with the amount of units that they need in order to, for the project to economically make sense. But we studied the site very carefully and looked at what it has. When you look at the site, you can see the, kind of like, there's a cluster of oak trees, they've been there for a long time. And we decided that we want to preserve that, we want to turn it into a, almost an immediate asset to the site. And we spread out the units across the site through a series of terracing, very careful terracing, in order to minimize the amount of cut and fill on the site. In the process, we were able to come up with a design that offered every resident views around, and also a very generous space. But what is even more important is we work very closely with the community. There was a, like, an ad hoc community of, I mean, group of people who get together, and they help give us directions. They tell us what they like and what they don't like. And the colors that you see on the project right here actually came from the community. The residents say, "No, we want to make it really colorful," so, you know, so we gave them that. The, in order to address with the fact that the site has a lot of topography, we also designed so that the bottom portion is primarily built with concrete block masonry to, in order to help retain the dirt, but also make them really durable. And in mixing up the colors of the blocks, we also discouraged graffiti. So, you know, we give texture, give color. There are ways that through design, you can help modify people's behavior. And I believe that, to this day, the project has not been tagged at all. This is another project right in downtown Ventura, and we took a similar approach, even though the site context is a bit more urban, is a bit more, it's a bit denser. And in order to be able to give the residents, you know, the kind of open space that they would like to have, we designed this in the, more like a courtyard approach. None of the units backed up against anyone, they all have the ability to have cross-ventilation, they open windows on one end, and then they open the windows on the other end, and the air can flow right through. So it gives the resident kind of like that ability to have, not just like a lot of natural light, but also kind of like natural ventilation right through their units. And the courtyard that you see right here would allow kids to have a safe place to play without having to go out on the street. In fact, we, you know, this shot was taken kind of like in the evening, but there was one where there was a bunch of kids playing, riding tricycles in the courtyard. And the courtyard is actually on top of a parking structure below. So I just want to show you that, if designed properly, I mean, affordable housing in these cases are actually, they add and they enhance the environment. This is another project that we designed, and you can see that the project from the bottom to the top has a kind of a gradual changes of colors. And that was also built out of concrete masonry units. It was done so very intentionally, because this particular building is in a relatively tough area of Ventura. We designed it, again, to discourage people from tagging the building, and it's been, it's been up for the last, maybe, four years now, and the building has not been tagged at all. And the residents, again, they absolutely love the unit. And again, this is a case where we designed it so that we have a courtyard behind the facade that you see there. So that's my little spiel about the design, and thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle, who's going to talk about resident services. So what kind of services can you provide to these residents, after-school programs, social services, et cetera? So Rochelle?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the commission, council, and board, and the neighbors and interested public. Thank you so much for your time, it's a beautiful Tuesday night, and I know you probably have other wonderful things to do. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the resident services that Peoples provides. We're proud to say that we don't just build the box. We also offer programs that will help our residents to remain stable and to become more self-sufficient. So our model is not that people stay in our housing forever, but that they move on after they've achieved greater financial success. What I do is I raise money through foundations, direct mail, special events, individuals, and planned gifts to support these programs. We have about a million-dollar budget now, which serves our residents in supportive housing, which is when caseworkers go out and work with our, any individuals that happen to have problems, and also our youth education enhancement program. Currently, we are serving about three-hundred-and-fifty kids a day at seven centers that are located onsite in our affordable complexes. So this is a great asset to the parents, you know, it's wonderful that kids from low-income, also from maybe monolingual, Spanish-speaking parents, that we have somebody who can help the children complete their homework every day. So this is a picture of some of our kids. When we build our housing, we always include a community room, and also a youth learning center, if we have the space and the money to do that. All of our youth learning centers have computers, because the kids really need to get on board with that. If the parents can't afford internet or a computer at home, they can come to the center. Is there one more slide? Okay. Okay, there we go. And so I addressed this a little bit before, this is our resident services at Neighborhood Development. So in these community rooms, we bring financial education, homeownership education, so that is a stepping stone for people who become more successful as renters in our properties. We have art classes, health educations, and it's also a place for the residents to get together for holidays. This is a photograph of one of our senior properties. And so seniors, of course, we don't have playgrounds, we don't have youth learning centers, but we have a lot of health education going on there. This is another, our supportive housing program has been described before, this is one of our caseworkers working with one of our residents at a senior property. And now, we'll have Joe Thompson, who will speak about our property management. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, and I just want to echo everyone else's comments in just thanking you for allowing us to come and present and share a little bit with you about what we're really passionate about, and that's affordable housing. So, thank you again. My name is Joe Thompson, and I am brand-new to, I guess I'm returning to California after about a twenty-four-year absence. So I was up in Seattle, Washington, and for the last twenty-four years. And the one consistent question I've been asked is, "Can I bring some rain?" That's not what I wanted to bring, but if I can bring it, I will, so. Property management is kind of where the rubber hits the road, so to speak, because after we've done great-quality construction, great-quality design, the projects turned over property management to really manage that property for a very long time. As Morgan mentioned, you know, we're in it for the long haul, and so our properties, you know, we want to be good stewards of and take tremendous care of them for the long haul, because minimumly fifty-five years, but like Morgan said, really for the long haul. So a couple of things about the Duncan Group, which makes us unique, is that we are an affiliate of People Self-Help Housing, and one of the things is that all of People Self-Help Housing's properties are managed by the Duncan Group, and I think that kind of allows for a seamless transition. We were formed in nineteen ninety-six as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and really, our mission is to raise the economic, educational, and social levels of the beneficiaries of People Self-Help Housing's programs and services. Currently, we've got about eighty FTEs on staff, and we are managing forty-eight properties. We third-party manage a property for another nonprofit in Santa Barbara. So what is property management? So as I said, it's kind of where the rubber hits the road for the, you know, for the day-to-day operations of property. And so we really provide management in, I think, a different way. And I've been doing affordable housing and property management for the last twenty-five years. And, you know, aside from my family, it is my great passion in life, and I can sincerely say that People Self-Help Housing and the Duncan Group, no one does it better. And one of the things that makes us really unique is, you know, there's kind of a, there's a double bottom line, if you will. So one is that we have to provide a great return on investment, and one is the financial, and the other is mission. And so we sort of keep those two things in balance, of return on financial investment for the organization and return on the social investment or the mission for the organization. So some of the things that make us unique is all of our properties have onsite staffing, and by that, I mean that folks, staff actually live onsite. So in addition to having, you know, Monday through Friday, forty-hour presence at the property, we also have after-hours and emergency response, and really, eyes and ears on the property, because our staff lives there. Property management's responsible really for the legal, regulatory, and code compliance for the property. So again, one of the things that makes us a little bit unique is that we are an affiliate of People Self-Help Housing, and we're there for the long haul, and so we do things like create a replacement reserve for the property so that when repairs need to be made, and we have an assurance that there are funds available to make those repairs. And I think that's something that makes us a little bit different than maybe, you know, a typical development. So we provide the financial oversight for the properties, and as I said before, that's something that is of critical importance to us because we want our properties to run efficiently and well, and maximizing the financial results of the property are critically important to us because we understand that that is what is going to keep that property looking beautiful and well-maintained for the years and years to come, that we're going to be responsible for it. So again, property maintenance is a big part of property management, and again, capital improvements. Again, and we have a replacement reserve that we set aside money every year to be able to provide those capital improvements when they come, so that when it comes time for, you know, to replace the roof or to seal coat the parking lot, and just all the things that come with the life cycle of a property, we've got cash on hand to be able to do those things. One of the things I think that also makes us unique is, every one of our units, we do a hundred percent inspection of that property, and each unit interior twice a year, because we want to ensure that, again, we're good neighbors and we're good stewards of this very valuable resource that we have, which is affordable housing.
If IT could pull up the other presentation for photos, we want to show you some examples. we want to show you some examples of what properties look like, because that's one of the things that communities worry about. What is it going to look like in the end? And so these are just some samples of some properties we have up and down the Central Coast. And Joe's going to just walk you through them.
Yeah. So, yes, you know, I asked everybody to close their eyes and imagine what affordable housing looks like, that mental image they have. It probably wouldn't be this. And again, we're very proud that the projects that we develop are really some of the best-looking projects, market rate or otherwise, in the community. We work with the community, ensure that the projects fit with the overall design of the community. And so these are beautiful projects. And I think, again, another thing that makes us unique is not only the beautiful, the day they open, but I really think they're beautiful 10 years after, 20 years after. And that's, again, because there's that seamless commitment from the design to the development, construction, and management of the project. Again, and some other properties in the Santa Barbara and Santa Maria area, again, you can see beautiful grounds, very well-maintained curb appeal is critically important to us, because we want our projects to shine. Stork Ranch, which is in Galeta, is a gorgeous project. We invest, again, in that curb appeal and that landscaping, so that these are projects that anyone would be proud of. One of my, sort of, measures of success is how many people we have come in off the street and asked for an application. They want to live there, because they think it's market-rate housing. So they just, it's a great place to live. And they're surprised to hear that, you know, it's affordable housing when we tell them that. So Valentine Court and Valentine Court III in Santa Maria, those are senior projects. Riverview Town Homes, and, oh, I wish the pictures were better. This is like, it's like a country club, that project. And so, again, the grounds are integrated beautifully into the community. And this picture here features kind of the community center for the project. Again, that community space is critically important, because it's not really just about providing a home, but it's about providing and creating a sense of community, because, you know, the affordability might be what attracts somebody initially, but that sense of community and the service that we provide is what's going to keep folks. And I'm really proud of the fact that, you know, our turnover across our portfolio annually is about 10%. So, you know, people want to, when they move into our properties, they want to stay there. And they want to stay there because of the quality construction of them, because of how they're managed. And so I think that kind of sets us apart. Pismo Creek Bungalows, and then Villa de Higera in San Luis Obispo. I drive by that one every day. And I pointed out to my kids about five times, that's, I manage that. That's affordable housing, and it's a beautiful project. Creekside Gardens up in Paso Robles. Again, you kind of see the different designs that we have that are intended to fit with the community and are in part due to community feedback and input on the design. Thank you so much.
All right, I think we had maybe one more slide on that previous presentation. I didn't want to put everybody asleep with PowerPoint. My goal was to keep this at 30 minutes or less. I don't know if we reached that goal. So are you guys seeing it on the TV? Because I'm not seeing it. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right. So we talked about, where have we been? So we talked about a little bit about ourselves, but how do you finance the project? How do you manage a project from construction? How do you manage a project once it's built? What do these things look like? And so the question here for Ojai is, what are the next steps? And so we threw out a couple of possible next steps. This is up to the Council and these two boards to really hash out. But these are some ideas. So, you know, discuss specific sites and design guidelines. Where would it be appropriate? Keeping in mind that tax credit financing has some restrictions and distance. So they want you to place the housing near certain services, like grocery stores and pharmacies and medical clinics, et cetera. So those are some of the constraints on placement. But your housing element has identified some sites already. Or Peoples can propose a concept, which would, you know, we would then pick what we think is an ideal site and a concept for a review. But really, this is the time, I think, to give it back to the City Council and the Planning Commission and the Building Appeals Board to talk about what are the next steps. And of course, ask questions, because I'm sure you have a few.
Any questions from Council members, commissioners, board members? Hey Dale. Dale, speak into the mic.
Is that it? Yeah. What's the smallest amount of land acreage that would make sense to build? I mean, Ojai doesn't have, you know, much.
Right. I think that's a tough question to answer, because the community doesn't want to build up, right? This is a community that says, you know, keep them low. So therefore, you're looking at now spreading, right? If you're to get the proper number of units to make it economically viable. And then there's new stormwater regulations. And Public Works isn't here, but I'm sure Public Works would say, hey, where are you going to put the stormwater? And so usually, you put it above ground, which takes up part of your land. So it's a tough question to answer. I think if we were to talk about sites down the road, and, you know, we can have somebody like Dow or an engineering professional look at it and say, this might be a good fit for this many units. You know, Dow's team has done concepts for us that would just give you a sense of what you can fit there. And I think that's the best way to go about it. So I wish I could give you a number, but I really can't.
Also, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bob. Do you ever build where there are storefronts in the front or on the main street and then housing in the back? Do you ever do that?
We have mixed-use, you're talking about. So the Villa de Higera property that you saw in San Luis Obispo is a mixed-use property. It's not our preference. We're not a commercial property owner or manager in any way. We did that because it was required by zoning. Our preference is to do the residential. But the answer is, yeah, we have a couple of them. Our preference is to do residential, but it's possible, yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Dadi?
How many acres in Avila? How many units? And what was the footprint? What was the coverage? I lived right down the road from that. I lived a few doors up the hill.
Okay, well, that's a good question. Dow, do you recall how many acres La Quintara was when you designed it? I have the unit count. I'll look that up.
I believe the unit count was 29 units. It's, I'm trying to remember. That's been a number of years now, like close to 10 years. But I think it's around maybe just like one, one something acres. It's not that, it's not a big site. And that's why we have some bridge unit. We raised like three units above the ground, and we have the space below for serving as a driveway.
What was the percentage of coverage? Because you had quite a bit of open space on that background.
As I recall, the coverage is just under 50%, because we left quite a bit of ground for the oak grove. We preserved most of the oaks on the site. And that gave residents a lot of open space to use.
Board Member Wierich?
Please.
I was going to reiterate that the unit count of 29 was correct. I just looked it up. So Avila Beach was 29 units.
One comment, two questions. One, if the success of a presentation is to have people think more about it and study it, you've certainly accomplished that with me.
Thank you.
And in terms of serving that, you know, interest for more information that I have, would it be possible to distribute as attachments the PowerPoint that you just did? There's a lot of reference material on there. We don't have a handout. I'd like to look up stuff and read and think more. I don't know if you want to control it or something, but if you could, at least some of that information that could be distributed to us as a PowerPoint attachment, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely, yeah. So everything I presented, I have no problem with the community talking about, looking at. I brought some backup information, mostly about us, because that's what I have.
You had listing of programs and things like that, and I would love to have that.
Yeah, I have some brochures. I have our property listings for our counties, so you can look at every property we have. We can go to our website and look at photos of all of our properties, because there's some that weren't shown. Keep in mind that sometimes we acquire a project, and then we rehab it, so the design is not really ours. Maybe a basic, older design, whereas we were showing you stuff that we designed and built. We wanted to give you a flavor for if Peoples were to do something in Ojai, how would we go about it? So I can get that to you after the meeting.
Appreciate it. And the last question, real quick, is much discussed around amongst us that talk about policy and things like that are affordable housing and broader policy goals, what can and cannot be served. For example, we want school-aged children. We want people who work here to be able to live here. Can those characteristics or not be included in how the affordable housing application process works?
So if I understand your question, and I've heard this from a few people, is how do you put parameters on who's eligible to live there? Is that what your question is?
Yes, for example, if you want to promote school-aged children in the valley, you want to promote people who are living here, working here, to be able to live here. Can that be included in the programming?
I'm going to hand it over to Joe, because he has a lot of experience in renting these. So once it gets built, he markets them, and he can explain how that process would work and how we can assure that.
So that is an excellent question, and it is one that has been on a lot of folks' minds tonight. So we can, we can do a couple of things to meet that goal. One is we can create local preferences for folks who are in the community or work in the community. As far as school-aged children, you know, if it's family housing, that is something that would increase the likelihood of that. We can't unfortunately necessarily require, you know, certain ages of children. So that's probably not something we could do. The biggest thing we can do, though, is how we market the property and where we market the property, and the timing of how we market that property. So, you know, typically, we start the marketing process six to seven months before the certificate of occupancy would be granted to the property. Because we want to get a, we want to hit the ground running when that CVO is delivered, so that we can get the property leased up and fully occupied as soon as possible. And so, again, how we market it is really critical to that. We cannot restrict the project to local folks only, but we can certainly market to the local businesses and community agencies in a way that is going to definitely get the word out to those local folks in a way that maybe wouldn't be to other folks. So does that kind of answer your question?
It's a beginning, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, a question with regard to the acquisition of land. What percentage of your projects are projects where you've purchased the property versus projects that you've acquired the land through some sort of donation?
I'd say a small minority by way of donation. One of the reasons we brought up the donation aspect here to this council tonight is that Ojai has limited resources from a public funding standpoint. Some towns, like the City of Santa Barbara, has a direct allocation of home or CDBG that we can use for the public portion. Ojai has land. But it's not something that is, I would say, is a majority. What we did is we showed an example of where it did take place in Carpinteria. I think maybe a couple of projects have used the land donation process. The other ones would be purchase, or maybe we'd say a low-price purchase. We have, sometimes we're approached by organizations like churches to take over a property at a low cost, or a piece of land. We had a church in Santa Maria that said, we have this two-and-a-half acres. If we sell it to you, will you build senior housing there? And we said, sure, senior affordable housing. And it was, you know, at a very fair cost to us. So the donation part is a minority. But the reason we brought it up to this group is we're thinking about how do you make it work in Ojai? And the land donation was probably the, we think, the critical piece to making it work in Ojai, given the other resources that aren't available.
Have you had an opportunity to view any of the sites in Ojai, including any of our overlays, to see where a project might work best or any of the city property that we have?
Yeah, so the housing element identified some land. A couple of them just behind City Hall. One of them by the, I think it's a public works yard there on Signal, and another one that is a larger piece of land behind City Hall. We did a walkthrough. Haven't done any penciling or anything as to where would you put units or how would you deal with the stormwater, any design stuff. But yeah, we've looked at them. It was part of the housing element process several months ago, when community development staff, and actually, it wasn't with Kathleen, it was her predecessor, who was familiar with us from another town, said, hey, let's call Peoples, they can help us out with the housing element. That's how that process got started.
Madam Mayor? If I may, well, I thank you guys for coming now and giving us this presentation. And I apologize that I was late and missed the beginning. But like Mr. Wierich said, it's a good starting point and lots of questions. And could you explain a little bit about what you did in Piru for the single homes? Is that rehabilitation? Is that add-on to single homes? What exactly is that program that you guys did in Piru and Fillmore?
Sure. It's new construction, so what we would typically do, and I'm not really the expert on our single-family home program, but what we do is we'll get a group of families together, say, for example, 15, 20 families, purchase multiple lots. They will then help construct all those homes, right? And their labor becomes essentially their down payment to that home. So it's a single-family new-construction program, but the people that live in it are the ones doing the majority of the work. There's some specialties that they don't do, like electric, for example. But they'll do, you know, framing and roofing and carpentry work and flooring and all that stuff. It's a very intense program, and it's a lot of hours. It's a commitment for those families to do that. And like I said, it lasts about a year before they get their home.
Thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, another question, and I'll let other people ask. When, in terms of, I heard you guys mentioning when you guys were in the process of developing affordable housing, you guys held community meetings to make sure that the community was including, you get input and feedback. Was that a long process? Was there a lot of people? How do you market it?
There's a good recent example of that. So in Santa Maria, I mentioned the church where we're going to do senior affordable housing. We're coming from the planning world. I joined People Self-Help Housing, and they say, here's a project we want you to work on. It needs a zone change. And it's a zone change amongst a bunch of single-family homes. And I said, okay, this could be a challenge from a neighborhood standpoint. So we actually held a community meeting. The church being somebody that wanted this to happen hosted the meeting at their facility. We sent postcards out to a radius. And one of the council members said, I want you to do a thousand-foot radius, which is way beyond what you would do for a council meeting. So we did that. And then I walked personally, I walked and knocked on doors to adjacent homeowners, and I made sure that they were going to attend. So we had a decent attendance at that community meeting. And we said, here's what we're thinking about doing. It involves a zone change. We want to do senior housing, I think it's 40 units. You know, what do you guys think? And that's not how I said it, but that was the gist of the presentation. And the community bought into it. And we have now applied for a zone change, and we're going through that process now. So that was a single meeting in that case. Every community is a little bit different. now. So that was a single meeting in that case. Every community is a little bit different. I don't know if Ojai's going to want multiple community meetings. I don't know if one is enough. Some people, you kind of beat it to death and, and you're done. Then it doesn't stop there, right? Because you still go to your planning commission for design approval. You still go to your city council if you need city council approvals. So it's not, it's the beginning of a process. It's not the end of it. But we've done it before, and we can do it again if it's necessary.
Board Member Farmer?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding your funding control. Are you in a voucher system, or are you in a percentage of, you know, on your breakdown on your costs? I saw your hard costs, but what about your, I mean, your soft costs? What about, who, I'm sure you have a funding department that manages that on cost overruns and what have you?
Well, so we'll set a budget, and when we apply for those tax credits, we apply with that budget. So what we'll do is we'll have our construction drawings complete. So our construction budget is, is very solid. And then we will apply to the tax credit committee with that piece of money, or that total. We'll have contingency built into it to control any cost overruns. And then, once we receive that tax credit allocation, plus those other sources I showed you, that's what we have to work with. But the last couple of times, we've actually been under budget. In fact, the project I showed you in Carpinteria, that was an under-budget project. So, you know, we have contingency built in. We're our own contractor. So the state of California is very cautious, and they make us build in probably more contingency than a private developer would. We have contractor contingency and owner contingency. So soft costs, we also have a soft cost contingency. So that's how we would control that.
Do you ever contact any of the banks? You know, banks have CRA programs that they have to adhere to, and they're constantly reminded of that by the regulators. Do you ever talk to the banks about any, the property that they may have, the RAO property, to see whether or not if they can come back on a CRA program?
You know, that's, that's a good question. I don't know. Banks contact us all the time because they want to do the construction loan. They want to maybe purchase tax credits. We have good relationships with multiple banks, big and small. And we haven't had any conversations with them about donating land that they've acquired through maybe foreclosure for a project. I don't know how that would, how that would work out. One of the keys I should probably mention is that the reason that a land donation from a public agency is so powerful is that it counts as a public fund, and that is a huge boost in your score in the, in the tax credit world. Whereas a donation from a private source, while it's important and it's, it reduces the amount of cost to, you know, that you're taking from the tax credits, it doesn't get that boost. So the, the way the program has been designed, the way this scoring has been designed, is it really favors public, public participation, and you get a big boost in your score, whether it be through home program. We've been in contact with the County of Ventura about their financing sources that would be eligible here in Ojai. So all of those sources are important to competing in that tax credit program, but the donation thing, I guess I'll have to look into that. I don't know how that would work out.
Madam Mayor, this question, I think, is for Mr. Clark with maybe a follow-up. If we wanted to begin the process of having this entity do a survey of our, of the city-owned land and come back to us with some sort of a proposal on actual parcels, what would be the first step for doing that?
I think they are willing to do that on their own, but we also have some funding in our housing fund from the loan repayment we recently received. And so we could at least fund having concepts developed on one or more parcels. And that's actually what we would discuss when we bring this back to you, is whether or not you want to do something like that.
Now, would that be an agendized item to the council?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And when do you think we might be able to get something like that on the council agenda?
We, we talked about doing that at the October 28th meeting.
Well, again, thank you for, or did you have any follow-up on?
No, no. I was just waiting for your questions.
Again, thanks. That's been a great presentation. I have a question about construction techniques. As far as, how do you determine how your projects are actually built, as far as, have any of them been LEED certified? Are any of them net zero energy at this point, looking at the long-term ramifications for the tenants and utilities? And, and does the city have any input in that, or is it structurally driven by you?
It's an excellent question. So you're, like I said, funding sources come and strings attached. I just recently applied for USDA loan. We were successfully awarded the USDA loan, which, in order to compete in that world, you have to go with net zero LEED platinum, which is the highest bar you can, you can reach, right? The, the tax credit world also has a high bar. We would go with usually a Green Point 100 program. The tax credit world also, if you want the points, if you want to compete, you're going to have to exceed the energy code requirements by about eight and a half percent. So the new energy code requirements that were just implemented for 20, I think they're the 2013 requirements, are pretty stringent, and we have to exceed that. So there's green initiatives built into the funding sources. And then, as far as the, the utilities go, there's utility allowances usually built into the rent from the tax credit rental portion. So that's part of it. We have our contractor on staff. So when we're designing with somebody like Main Street Architects, our contractor's looking at the drawings. We're having input as to what we want to do. And of course, we want to build an energy-efficient project, not only for the tenants, but you remember that we have a community center that we maintain. So if we can, we put solar panels on it, so we don't have an energy bill for that community center 55, 90 years from now, right? So we do build those things into it. And it's, it's project-specific. It's also funding-specific. I would imagine that the tax credit financing would probably drive this here. Now, the tax credit world is not just here. They're looking down the road, and they're thinking, "How are we going to require all projects to be net zero in the future?" So they, they're, they're thinking down year 2020 how things are going to go, and I see these requirements actually ratcheting up through the years. So as far as green goes, I think, I think you're in good hands.
Any other questions, comments from Commissioners, Council?
I have a second one, if that's allowed, Mayor.
Mr. Wierich?
I, I noticed the affordability covenant mentioned 55 years.
Mm-hmm.
And I also noticed in the Camarillo case, you assembled the site from different sources, some land you had and then another source.
Carpinteria project.
Carpentry, excuse me. I'm already forgetting.
That's okay.
The detail. If, for example, assembling a site requires a mixture of title transfers, and then maybe the only way to get the, maybe say parking or something, is a piece of land on a long-term lease that would extend beyond the affordability covenant, is that an option or not?
The lease, so the lease would have to go beyond, I think, the affordability covenant.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I believe that's the case.
Is that possible? Let's say if a public agency is restricted to, you know, giving, you know, doing a title change on the property, but they'd be willing to donate use for an extended period because that stays within their restrictions on their hold.
Right, so the-
Holding the property. Is that possible, ever?
The, the answer, the short answer is yes, it's possible.
Okay.
The long answer is it makes things a little bit more complicated. You don't get your typical lease landlord rights. The lenders come in and they want to lean on the land anyways. The lease has to be, for, if you want the points, right, in the tax credit world, you got to make it look like a donation. So it's going to be a long-term lease, like 99 years. It's going to be a dollar-a-year type of lease. It's going to be, it's going to have its own, the affordability requirements are going to be imposed by the tax credit committee. So the lease, essentially, you're going to end up writing the lease that almost becomes unbreakable because the lender's not going to lend on something that they feel like there's any risk there. So, yes, the lease is possible. It just, and then it becomes a little bit more legwork to pull it off.
Yeah.
Yes, to the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. But the services that you provide, is there a charge to the tenants or the homeowners?
Oh, sure. Rochelle, you want to go?
Sure. There isn't a charge. It's, it's completely free. So financial education, sometimes we'll bring in a bank. You know, they're very interested in doing that. We partner with a lot of other organizations, so we, like literacy councils and things like that, so they come in. Even the after-school care program is free. So that's what I, I do, is I raise the money for that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. That's good.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask a follow-up question to that, with, in regards to services, does the affordable, I guess, building structure, whatever it is, does it have to be a certain units or a certain size to include the services, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. For the youth education centers, we tend to put those in where we have larger multifamily apartments. So say 40 or something like that. But it depends on the community as well. Some communities are very interested in having us do the after-school education because it helps the schools. So, for example, in Carpinteria, we are very lucky to have CDBG funding there. So I can operate the program about half from, just coming from CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, at that location. Where that is helpful is that the kids that need the help, we're doing it after school, one-on-one, and they just have tremendous success rates. So we're keeping them at grade level. The supportive housing program, which is where we have the caseworkers, the social workers working with our residents, that is everywhere. So even if there's, you know, a senior property with, with 10 units, the social workers are there working with the, with the tenants that need it and providing programs.
If I, I have a question concerning how you go about phasing your work in terms, obviously, we start off with some sort of feasibility studies. How does that break down, and what is, what is, how does the financial commitment from the city work along those lines?
Sure. We're noticing a trend that everybody wants to be last in the boat. Whereas the tax credit world, they get to be last, except for the affordable housing program through Federal Home Loan Bank. So typically, your local sources come in first, right? Your city or your county source will make the first financial commitment to the project. It may be after we've gained site control. It may be as a way to actually gain site control. CDBG funding is eligible for acquisition of a site, or home funds would be eligible after the site is acquired for construction. Those come with timing requirements, of course. Once you receive the home funds, then you have to start performing at a certain time. So it's time-sensitive. The trend, the typical is local comes in first. We also talk to these other sources we talked about, your housing trust funds or neighbor works, that will all kind of converge. And then, right before you go to tax credit, you got to have all that committed because the tax credit committee will not give you credit for public funding unless you have a letter that says, "No, this funding is, it's earmarked for this project." That's what allows you to grab those points.
So, just so I'm clear, how, how are you, how does your company sustain itself through this? Is it through those tax credits, those, those various grants or whatever, or is it actually coming by some sort of seed money that companies is, through the city?
Right. So, well, Joe's portion, they'll earn a management fee for managing the, the units over time, right? The tax credit financing allows us to take a developer's fee for doing the work. So we may carry a project for two, three-plus years or more. And then, at the end of the day, when it's rented up and all the paperwork is finalized, we're allowed to extract a fee from that, and that's what keeps our side going. We also have an IT service that has a small fee from a local housing authority, and then our contractor, since we're our own general contractor, we can get a fee from that. So that's what keeps us going along, as well as some of these grant sources that Rochelle mentioned for the programs.
Any other questions, comments from, in what appear?
I have one. May I ask? The units you showed, they were all, you know, beautifully maintained, and, you know, once people move in, the maintenance costs, are they, I know the Duncan Group, do they finance the whole thing, or are the residents responsible for it to a certain extent, you know, maintenance inside and out?
I'll let you, I'll let you tackle that, sure.
So, it's, it's really the, the property is sustained through the resident rents, you know, first and foremost. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really proud and delighted with is even on our services, you know, the properties, again, through the resident rents, contribute, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to, to providing those resident services. And as I, as I said before, we, we, we take the upkeep of our properties seriously, and we take resident education on, on how to keep up their apartments and how to, how to be, how to conserve. I think that's one of our, our things that makes us unique as well, is that we really take the extra step to help educate people how to, how to maintain a household. And so, the, the properties due through the, through the rents and then through, as I said, those replacement reserve contributions, which are typically on a, it's an agreed-upon dollar amount on a per-unit basis every year that we contribute that allows us to, to address those capital issues that, that come up from time to time. Because, again, we're, we're in it for the long haul, and, you know, so we have to manage it that way because this is not a property that we're going to get out of in, you know, in five years, or eight years, or 10 years, or 55 years. So we're, we've got to make sure that those properties are maintained well. And resident education's a big part of that, and then planning for the future by setting aside a little bit every year is the other part of that, so.
And do you have any, like, CCNR regulations, or anything, that kind of thing with it? You know, maintenance and the way they are lived in?
So, we, we have, we have house rules. Their lease requires upkeep of the units. As I said before, we have, we have one person on staff who does nothing but inspect every unit and every property twice a year. And that is one of the best ways that we have of ensuring that our properties are going to be well-maintained. Because, as I said before, our, our turnover is about 10%. So we don't have a lot of opportunities to, to repair units on turn because they just don't turn. And so it's really critically important that we get into the units and assess the situation, so.
Thank you.
I have another question. I think I, to kind of echo what Commissioner Foster was asking on the process. Now, if the city did, if the council did decide to, to grant land, could they do that conditionally? Like, is it, is this something that you come in and is it a, you build it and hope that the people will come, or is there community involvement as far as the design goes? Like, do you see-
Sure.
-what I'm saying?
Well, of course, there'd be community involvement through your normal design process, which you're going to have planning commission meeting. And do you have an architecture review board in this town? The planning commission does architecture as well? I don't recall, but, so planning commission, city council approval, and of course, a community meeting if we think that's warranted, right, or necessary, if there's that much curiosity about the project. We wouldn't want to undertake a project that we thought was going to sit empty. In fact, we have to show the tax credit committee a market study that basically supports our claim that we can rent these units. So market study will validate and support the demand. We have no interest in taking on a project that's not going to rent up. That's not going to work because that really puts us in jeopardy with the tax credit committee. It's not something we're interested in doing. As far as a conditional commitment, I, I don't know how that would work out because the tax credit world wants a commitment of funds. I don't know if you can say it's committed for a time or not. Maybe it's, might have to talk to the city attorney about.
I mean, going back to kind of the earlier point I brought up, like, I mean, I'm just saying hypothetically, could the city conditionally say, you know, "We might consider giving you this piece of land if you built net zero energy units?"
So you put your own energy requirement on it?
Or not just that. It could be anything. It could be, "We want so much, you know, community art," or "We want this, or that, or that." Does that happen in other projects?
I, I haven't seen it because the other funding sources have, I think a lot of, a lot of your concerns are built into the other funding sources. I don't know. I, I don't have a quick answer on that one. I guess we can talk about that offline and figure out how that would work and what your concerns are. I would caution the, you know, the, the community that if you start adding things to a project, it's really nice, it's really great, but just keep in mind it, it's affordable housing. We're restricted, and how do you pay- And how do you pay for it? And what, what happens is, if you, if you do a lead-platinum project, it may end up that People Self-Up Housing comes back to this podium and says, we're a little short. You know, where are the other public funds at to help us get our, capture those, you know, that budget again? So, there's a give and a take, right? So you want, you want this really nice project, you want to have these things, but you've got to make it economically viable. And so, that's where we balance out with a pro forma. We track the budget, we track the tax credit score, and we try to figure out what is the sweet spot. With this USDA loan I talked about, that was a $3 million loan at 1% interest. So yeah, that, that helps go a long way to lead-platinum. It also came with rental assistance, so we're not taking, so the renters pay that minimum, or those maximum rents that we talked about, but then USDA pays a difference. So that can go pay for other loans or some of these other things we talked about, lead-platinum, net-zero project, because it's going to be loaded with solar panels. We're putting carports up just to support solar panels. So, there's a give and a take, I think. And as we go through this process, I think that's what we'll discover, you know, how does the community want to go about it? What is the vision of what should it look like? What should it be? Who should it be? And then, how do you pay for it? And that's where we come into play. We can talk about what's available. We've done some research on what's available in the area, we talked about already. And we presented what we thought was a typical viable path forward. But we can talk about other requirements down the road, too.
How do you speak to the "not in my backyard" syndrome?
Well, it happens. And what we do is, I think, we do things like we did tonight. And we show what we do and how we do it. We bring in advocates that speak to their experience with us and try to, I think, show the community that we're there as a community partner. We're not a fly-by-night company that builds and then leaves. We're in the community for long-term. We have examples up and down the Central Coast that anybody can go see and see for themselves how we manage it. Some people, you're simply not going to convince is just simply "not my backyard," and that's the way it is. What you end up doing is, you do your best job of trying to show that it's a community asset. It's something that we can show people, or give them confidence in, that we're going to do it the way we say we do it and because we've proven it. And we hope that council members and decision-makers will weigh that along with the no-voices. But we run into it. I think what, what's interesting, sometimes we'll, if you drive down a street, and I, this happened in Golita, when I first came out with the company, Ken, who isn't here tonight, took me down the street, and he said, now, which property is ours? And it was surrounded by market rate. And ours was the nicest-looking property on the block. So, when you do that, and I think it goes a long way to alleviating some of those concerns that people have. Some people, you'll never alleviate those concerns, and that's just life. But I think we've, like the situation in Santa Maria, we really brought people around through buy-in, right? Some people, they just want to be reached out to. They don't necessarily want to oppose, they just want to have their two cents. And sometimes, we can accommodate. We can, like in Avila Beach, they said they want colorful. Okay, we'll do colorful. They got, they got something from the project that they were interested in. It helps with the buy-in, it alleviates those concerns. So there's, it's politics, right? It happens. But we do it, and we try to make a project that everybody, at the end of the day, is comfortable with.
Any additions? Dow?
I have one more question. What about pets in these projects?
Good question. I think it's, I think it's a case-by-case basis. Joe, can you address pets?
It is a case-by-case basis. Currently, at our family properties, we don't allow pets. At some of our senior properties, actually, the funding source, HUD, requires that we allow pets. And so, we have a pet policy and rules around that. We do, a service animal, however, is not considered a pet, so just to point that out, so that, so that should we build this beautiful property and you see someone with a dog or a cat, that might be a service animal. So, but yeah, currently, at all our family properties, we have a no-pat policy.
Could be a condition.
Any other questions from board, council, commission? Anyone in the audience have comments or questions? Come on up. Come up here so that we're being televised, and so you need to be at the podium so you can be heard.
Maybe she could ask us something. Judy, you want to help?
Judy, you want to help?
Judy, how about if you go back and find out what the question is, and maybe you can relate it to us at the podium? Anyone else have a question? Pat, come on up.
Hi, I'm Pat McPherson, I live here in Ojai. One of the questions that I have, and I think a lot of people have, that have been in this community for some time, is the issue about traffic. If you all recall, if you were here fifteen years ago when the Ojai Valley Inn wanted to expand, they had to, they had to put them through the wringer, basically, in order to allow them to expand. And part of that was to provide housing for their employees. The concern that a lot of people have about affordable housing is not the fact that it's "not in my backyard," is that they didn't want it to be a bedroom community for Ventura or Oxnard. But it sounds like tonight, and I'd like to get clarification on this, there is no way to 100% ensure that the people who live there are from Ojai when it first gets rented or when it rents in the future. Is that my understanding? Am I correct?
That is correct, but I just, to do a corollary to that.
Come to the mic so that people at home can hear you.
So, that is correct. There are no 100% assurances that every person, every household would be from this area. But I, what I just wanted to point out is, this is a way of, of at least offering the opportunity that a lot of folks who work in your community can actually live in it. So I think there's a benefit to the community for that.
Yeah. But it, but we cannot, even in the initial offering, say that it has to be all Ojai people.
We could not.
It could be first-come, first-served, or whatever. It could be first-come, first-served, or whatever criteria is normally used. Is that right? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Bill? Oh, well, Judy. Bill, you can come up right after Judy.
The question is, do the units have, can they be built for people with disabilities? Or how do you include people with disabilities into your program?
It is common practice now that we design all units, even for non-affordable housing, as universal, universal units. Meaning that anyone can live there and can use the facility. Of course, people with certain particular disability, like if that person is in a wheelchair, then we would add features to the unit. Otherwise, we call it universal design, like all the doors would be wide enough to accommodate a wheelchair or not.
Bill?
I just wanted to follow up with the ADA. The funding sources require a certain amount of ADA adaptable, or ADA-ready units when the door opens, by percentage. And they're also now requiring, not just for mobility disabilities, but also sight and hearing. So we put in different features for that as well. And then, as Dow said, they're universal, so they're adaptable. If somebody were to apply and need to have the unit modified in some way, it's ready to be easily modified. So the funding sources require that. And you can have some units, when the door opens, ready to go, and the rest of them will be ready to be adapted when needed.
I would like to address the subject of how we build this and attract Ojai residents or people who work in Ojai, because I think that's going to be a major community concern. When Bill and I had a conversation with the Ventura Doug Tapkin from the Ventura Housing Authority, we put that question to him, and he explained to us, I wish I had reviewed it more recently, but anyway, he explained to us how they use a point system. And, you know, this, I guess, assumes that you're going to have a lot of people applying for affordable housing, and I think he's probably right. That people are assigned points based on where they live. If they live here, they'd get a lot of points. If they work here, they'd get some points. If they have family here, they would get some points. And the people with the best scores are the ones who are accepted into the unit. That is how I envision us being able to control the situation. The Affordable Housing Committee is ready to support the builder and the project manager on this, to make sure that everybody in this town knows what's happening. And if they have an employee who works for them, who would qualify for this, they would be sharing that information. I guess that's really all we can do, because legally, if you take public funding, you can't say, you guarantee it's only going to be Ojai. But if we get enough people from Ojai, it's not a problem.
And for whoever would answer this, have you, do you have such a point system? So that you can more assure us that Ojai workers or residents would have the units?
So, I have not used a similar point system to that. That'd be something we could certainly look at. Again, local preferences, though, are something that we're open to. Again, I think the biggest thing is, because in reality, you're probably talking, I don't know the size of the project, but we're not talking about a lot of units. And I think marketing well in advance to, to the local community is probably the best. I mean, it's the thing that's worked in, in, in my opinion, that's the thing that would work best. But we could certainly look at local, local preferences, most definitely.
Thank you. Bill?
When Judy and I and other members of the committee started talking about this, one of the requests from the mayor, Mayor Strobel, was to make contact with the Ventura County Housing Authority because of the various projects that they did throughout Ventura County and here, with Whispering Oaks being a notable one. So, that was a, it was a concern that we wouldn't push a project that would be created and have people from throughout Ventura County find out about it, apply, and bring 30 to 40 families in here if it was a 40-unit rental. We didn't want that because I kind of understand from maybe soft sources that that may have happened with another project that was built 10 to 15 years ago. So, we understood from Mr. Tapkin that the priority point system was acceptable to federal and state agencies, and didn't violate any discriminatory laws. That's one reason why we got very excited and continued to push and do this with a lot of energy. The one thing that Mr. Tapkin said was that this priority point system works for about maybe 30 days. I'm not sure exactly how many days. But if you don't fill up all your units using the priority system, at the end of so many days, it's open to anybody. You remember that, Judy?
Yes.
Yeah. So there is a priority, and I've put in a lot of energy into the marketing. I would hope that, Joe, you would look into that. Because having it, it just has an open, let's see if we can get the interest, the interest going and get people to sign up, I'm not sure that's what we bargained for. Morgan, do you want to say something about that? Because you and I talked about that a little bit. Okay.
So, you know, one of the things I don't want to do is, I don't want to promise something that I can't necessarily deliver on. But what I can say is, I definitely support the, what folks are saying, and I hear it loud and clear about wanting folks who live or work in Ojai to live in this project. So, if, and, so just because I have not done a point system before, doesn't mean that that's not something we could do. Typically, a point system, and I guess I would probably want to get a clarification, because typically, a point system is done by a housing authority for awarding Section 8 vouchers, which is a different process than this. So I guess that's part of the reason I'm a little hesitant, is I feel like I-
I would like to comment. The point system that Bill is talking about was applied to the newer housing development. Was it Montgomery Oaks? Was that our newest one? Or Sycamore Homes?
Sycamore.
Sycamore Homes? That point system was applied to Sycamore Homes, which was an affordable housing complex here, or unit.
Right. So it, so it sounds like it's something that definitely could be done. And so, very much would, would look into that. We have done preferences for downtown workers and other kinds of set-asides at projects. And so, you know, if that's, if that's the, if that's the commitment that I'm hearing that you want, I want you to know that that's a commitment. And I think we would definitely do everything we can to try to deliver on. I just don't know the specifics of it yet. And it's kind of hard to say, because we don't really know the specifics of the, of the project yet, so.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
When we speak of donating property to this project, and the same, if we were to choose to do this, but we couldn't guarantee that it would be people living and working in Ojai that would be guaranteed housing in those units, for myself, I found that kind of uncomfortable, to be donating the land that is owned by everybody in the town. It's a citizen's property. For a project that would not be benefiting solely the citizens of Ojai is a non-starter for me. So I would not be in favor of donating land for, for a project where that couldn't be guaranteed.
Yeah. I don't want to speak out of turn, but I've been, I've been working for People Self-Up Housing for seven years, so I have seen a lot of the history of these projects opening. For example, Dow worked on the Lakotaura in the city of Avila Beach. Now, in that project, we actually had to go back and find people who were displaced by the oil damage to the land. And there definitely is a preference there for local workers. It's very specific. Some have to be in produce or fishermen and things like that. I worked below the Victoria Hotel in the city of Santa Barbara. Adjacent to that is a property called Casas de las Granadas. And that is an infill property on the side of a city parking lot. We have 12 units there. And there's definitely preference there for workers. And also, they can't even own cars, so they want walkability. So rather than speculate, I would say to work with some of these municipalities, we can give you the names, and they can tell you how they did it. So, having a little bit more history, I know that we actually do have some preferences there. So I would just encourage, instead of a lot of specula- do have some preferences there, so I would just encourage, instead of a lot of speculation, to do some research, and I'm sure Morgan's department will be doing that as well.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience have questions, comments?
I have another question, if I may, as far as the rentals are concerned, is there rent control, or is there an annual rental increase for the residents in these units?
So, there, in the, in the program, there are rent ceilings, and again, it's based on the set-aside, which is based on where they are relative to the area median income, so there are ceilings on how high the rent can go, typically, that is, that's evaluated every year, and, by HUD, and every year, they release a new schedule, sometimes that goes, sometimes that goes up, but sometimes it doesn't, it's based on, it's all relative to what the annual area median income is, so, so that's about the best I can do on that, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, any boards, commissions, councils? Anyone in the audience?
If I could, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank Bill and everybody on that ad hoc committee for putting this together, it's been a really impressive presentation, and I really appreciate you guys coming all the way up here to talk to us about it.
Any other comments before I adjourn the meeting?
I'd just like to say, you can send the information to me, you have my email address, and I'll see that all the people here receive that.
Any other comments? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.